Hey. Do we really need Bob? I mean, if the man's got some pressing things, do we really need him? I mean, it's, I don't care one way, but if the guy's gotta get back in the saddle, you know?
Why would we want him to say for half an hour and then after half an hour?
Just keep moving on.
All right, let's keep moving. All right. I put together a list. One of the things that Tom Herrick had asked me to do today was to present the environmental budget request, which I have gathered together from their annual report and a couple of other notes that were on the website. And I talked to a couple of their members. Net-net, I put together this document, which is basically, it will save you a lot of time. It reads as a lock award for Public Works to do. And my question to Bob is, they estimated that the cost to do this work is about $15,000. Could the... Most of this is work that the Public Works group has already been involved with this year. And if they plan to stay involved with this, yes, then give it a quick read and see what you...
Yeah, I gave it quickly. Question is, we're going to budget some money for these general things, which is okay. And at a certain point, hopefully in the near future, whenever we're going to... Oh, this is for next year, so.
Yeah, yeah.
After that, yeah. I just forget what you're... They, we will, we will get a specific proposal with details and cost.
I guess my, my solution to this one, Dave, is if Bob is amenable to it, is to say, this, this group has estimated, just like we do on other costs, that it would be about $15,000 to do this work. Can Bob say, can you, can you comfortably say you can cover this within the budget that's already been proposed, within the budget, that to take care of the 15? Because as I read through it, a lot of it is you're already doing it. Well, that's not entirely true.
Okay, well, that's what I'm asking.
You know, I'm not sure what they put in. I don't have dollar amounts next to what you just handed me.
Yeah, I don't either. Okay. All I have is an aggregate guess.
No, that's fine. Flight control is a product that they're speaking of, that they put on the ground. I think they're reducing your attention more or less. I'm assuming this is the chemical they want applied to the ground.
I'm guessing the same thing.
Based on the quick read on this. So we have chemical costs along with personnel costs to apply. I can't tell you the number. We'd have, I'd have to have square footage and now, you know, have to figure out how many square... It looks like based on our... Top of my head, I think it was about six grand last time we did this, which is a rough number. So that's probably the first item. National Control Work, we did not participate in that. The committee, Varmill Natural Assets Committee, actually took care of that. I believe that was oiling of the eggs, which... Okay, so they're asking...
They're proposing that you do that.
Okay, again, you're talking man-hours and labor. I can't tell you what that would be this year. My understanding, that wasn't effective, based on their last report. Public Works was to produce six no-beating geese signs.
Let me save us some time here because...
Come on, what?
Plenty to talk, plenty to talk.
What I'm saying is...
I want to hear it, Tom. I want to hear what you have to say.
I'm trying half an hour, isn't it? Go ahead. All right, so you're asking me a dollar amount. I don't know how to add dollar amounts. So the biggest, the biggest one I have concern about, or a couple of Public Works remove stakes, fine, we can handle that, no issue. Public Works should be mowing the no-mow zone areas, one foot tall for four times a year. We've got to make sure, based on the depth and the width, I think that was a 20-foot from the side of the water, so we don't, I just got to check if we have an arm that'll reach out to do that cut. I can't, I mean, I can necessarily do that with our current equipment setup. And then the last one, I can't, I have no idea what that cost. You understand what the last one says, right?
Yeah.
The question that I...
I don't have, I don't have an idea what the last one says, but I know we've got this whole issue swirling about not killing geese. Is that what's involved in the last one?
The bottom, the bottom line is, these, even though they're domestics, they, they are regulated by the U.S. Department of Agriculture and Fish and Wildlife Services directly. So the concern that I have with any of this is that it is directly under the supervision of USDA and Fish and Wildlife Services, that we're not going out on our own. Now, signs, you know, that's harmless. Signs are harmless. But we are not going out on our own and doing something unilaterally without approval from Fish and Wildlife. If we don't get it, we're outside the law, because they are federally protected species.
For clarification, I do not believe they were resident geese, right? They're Canadian geese?
Canada, Canada, Canada geese. And the migratory and the resident get commingled during the, during the flood season. What we're attacking by oiling eggs are resident geese, resident Canada geese, the ones that stay. The ones that have taken off are gone, you know, they're, they're...
So I guess the question boils down, looking at this list, you all just weren't put, if you, if you want us to continue to work towards this problem to mitigate or apply geese control in some way, you just need to give me a dollar amount to put in the budget to handle this. It'd be an operational expense.
They used to attend the environmental meetings, and this came up on numerous occasions. And they were going to do this addling of the eggs. Now, all of a sudden, it's being put on Public Works to be addling the eggs. And we are told on the bottom, that's talking about killing the geese, that we've told several people at several meetings that that wasn't in the budget. Why is this being thrown in at the end of this thing when, when, you know, where was this...
Clarification, Bill, clarification. That, that last bullet point has nothing to do with killing anybody.
No, it doesn't.
It's relocating them.
They're going to remove.
It's removed. It doesn't mean it was relocated.
Maybe using a dog or whatever.
Time of relocation is what they're talking about.
Are we being that naive?
Well, wow.
I'm not, Bill, and, and by the way, I agree with you. Tom, it wasn't in the budget. That's what we're talking about right now. So if the statement was accurate at the time, it was right.
I get that.
And if afterward finished here, it may not be accurate. I believe in at least the last case, I don't, I really don't know very much at all about this entire issue or problem. I've read, I have a layman's knowledge perhaps, but I don't know all the details. However, I have to believe that there is a qualified certified contractor out there that does know and that acts in accordance, because they're in business, they're, they're going to do it according to the rules that are laid down. I mean, and, and when we, and all we're saying to Bob is, find one of those contractors, hire them, and turn the problem over to them. And what, how it happens, whether they, you know, move them to a farm or, or whether or not they end up as a dinner, is, is their issue. And it's, it's pretty well specified in it. And I believe, I haven't attended a lot of meetings, Bill, but, but I did attend the one where they talked about this and said, look, we have to get another solution. I believe you're right. And, and this is specifically what they were talking. So all the other stuff is good, but, but in the bottom line, that last bullet is, but we're talking about that.
This document that you have in front of you was pulled together by me last night. I never got anything directly from committee or from Tom specifically of what he wanted me to put forward. I put this together last night from the notes of their annual meeting and their annual report to us.
I get that, but I've heard through this process at our three or four other meetings, I've heard this, you know, is possibly going to come up, it's possible. Why is it coming up at the end here?
Well, let's, well, let me, how about if we make this easy? Why don't we put $15,000 in operational expense for goose mitigation, for mitigation of the geese, one way or the other? We'll look at the flight control, we'll look at all of these steps, and we'll come back working with the Environmental Natural Assets Committee. We'll have them give us the write-off and we'll move forward. We just need a budgeted number so we have some money set aside for goose management.
That doesn't go far enough for me. It's not just the committee. I, I need to feel secure that we are coordinated with Fish and Wildlife and with USDA. I need to have that, that feeling.
Fair enough, but that's not budgetary, right? I just need a budget.
It is not budgetary, but, but in your comment, you said, put something in the budget and we will work with. And then you talked about the committee. What, I want to be assured that you are working with the committee and either USDA or Fish and Wildlife.
Here's what I can tell you definitively, any action we take has to be approved by the board. All I need is a dollar amount for the budget. We will develop a plan. I don't, you, you don't even know who it is, USDA or Fish and Wildlife, you don't know who? I don't know who. Just put a dollar amount, it's a serious issue, or I will address it, I'll bring it to you for approval, and if that, at that point, we'll figure out who it is. I just don't want to make it...
I can give you a name if you'd like. I mean, I have a name.
During the approval process, I think what we have is that it will be approved by USDA. Oh, you won't know that.
It will be approved by the, whatever agency over...
Right, whatever agency is approved.
So the answer to your question is, yes, it will be.
Okay. That's all, that's all I'm...
You know, I have one question, Bob.
Yes, sir.
Sure does, the environmental. Does, do we have the names of any specific contractors, get an idea of...
USDA has, has the names of contractors.
And they have, have a list.
Yeah, you have to contract with them and they have to do it.
And they have to do it, and good. And do they, do you have any idea at all what the cost of that is?
About $38. I think it's, it's like six, 611, last count.
611, so that's more than $15,000. Okay, that's why I'm asking the question. Are we budgeting enough to do this?
The purpose of the committee is, since we're going to have other meetings anyway, why don't we just go find out what these costs are and report back?
Can we, can we agree to budget $15,000, Bob suggests? And we, and ask Bob to come back with a, you know, a hut, the actual, a closer number. If you need 25 is what I'm getting at, make it 25.
I would agree with that. Yeah, I'm, and you want that before we do the final, the budget?
Yeah, finally, yeah. I mean, it should, I don't think it'd take that long.
Well, I'll be against that, because, you know, like I said, this is thrown in at the end if we told several that it, that, you know, there's going to be no, that there was no money in the budget at that point. I just think this is...
He's right, he's right.
Well, he's, I don't know who told several people, but the board certainly never voted on it.
Absolutely. I'll work towards a number, we'll start with 15 for today, and I'll try to tighten that up in the next week.
And we can just as well tie the, by the way, we can tie the, the amount of budget money with stipulation that there is no euthanasia allowed, period.
Oh.
We can do that.
Why?
Why not?
I don't want to. I mean, I want, I want to solve this...
I want to solve the problem too, but to Bill's point, we have answered in the first session that there's no money in this budget to euthanize geese, and therefore, no, we haven't voted on it. I'm not arguing with you, Bill, I agree. I'm simply saying that since I wasn't providing anything that I could actually provide today, I had to come up with something to give you. And I think the solution here is to, to do what we just said. Go back, get some numbers, and then we can conclude it or not, and you build in whatever you want. Next, we're going to skip B, let's go to C, which is merit raises, AKA the 3%. Cheryl, I think this one is kind of up your alley.
Really?
To address this, I didn't actually understand that this was going to be raised to the board.
If it's not, it's not. I mean, we, you know, the bottom line is...
I think it has to be...
If you don't put money in the budget that allows people to be given merit raises, then the amount of money has to be put in the budget somewhere, otherwise there are no merit raises for anybody. And I personally am not going to support, and I don't think you would either, to support no money for merit raises at all.
No, you shouldn't put words into my mouth.
I'm not trying to. I was, it's...
You said you and I are going to be free, so.
Where are...
I'll just restate that I had a concern from the beginning of this process about giving raises in this economic times. I said it then, and I still feel the same way. I understand that we need to allocate funds to keep our employees. And I understand that by putting this money there, it doesn't mean anybody gets a dime of it. But nobody can get anything unless the money's allocated. So get it, understand the process. I will simply say that I had a concern about trying to keep the salaries at a level where they are currently to just be physically responsible.
How do we accomplish that? That's a serious, I'm curious question.
What do you mean, how do you accomplish it?
Okay, so you said...
You don't say nobody gets a raise.
You don't say nobody gets a raise.
You do say.
You do say, oh, you do say nobody gets a raise.
You do say nobody gets a raise.
Nobody gets a raise.
We are freezing the salary levels this year. That's how you accomplish it? That's your question?
Yeah, that was a question. That was a question. I didn't, I didn't quite, quite understand that, that issue. So, I mean, that's a valid discussion. I'm wondering, I'm thinking about an alternative. So I'm thinking, does exceptional performance in certain limited cases, they froze out too because of...
They would if there's no money allocated, any raises.
Yeah, what would happen if you allocated significantly less? Let's say 1%. Now, the 1% isn't going to be across the board, but it is going to, you know, be able to be distributed to high performers or exceptional performers or something. I'd say, I'm just talking about alternatives.
I understand, and, and that's an alternative. Make it less 3%. Or the other alternative is, we can always, people can always come back and we can change the budget. I mean, that exists in our rules, and we can do that. So if there is a person that is deemed to require merit increase, exceptional performance, or leave, call it a bonus, whatever you want to call it, they have, we have the ability to do that way.
I, I have to say, you know, I haven't been a manager myself for many, because I, I, well, you're, you're not going to believe this, but I, I believe Bob means flexibility and should have the flexibility to, to offer raises in exceptional cases. And I think the best way to do, to allow him to do that, and at the same time, you know, do the kind of reduction that you're talking about, to reduce the amount, 1%.
That's a little, little strong. I would say, I, being an HR, 3% raise now, see, is it somebody will get a six and someone will get nothing? Give that hat back and that. Don't take your hat back. That's exactly, I did it myself. So I know that, I know that those things are possible, but if you don't give anything at all, then he has no way to make a raise. You could say 1%, but that, 1% is mostly what it's like, eh?
No, Derek, well, if you're, if you believe that, and you also believe we're not talking about exceptional performance, I mean, you believe that we're talking about 1% across the board. Yeah, if I got 1%, I think it's the same thing.
Well, I don't think that everybody's going to get 1% or 3%, whatever.
Well, no, if every, if you, if the, if the line is 1%, it's actual group, some people may get 10%, others will, but across the board, many will get zero. I don't know.
All right, well, let me, let me chime in. Yeah, that's okay. I think our messaging right now on this, this is an interesting discussion towards the end of the budget process. I adamantly disagree with, with removing the 3%. I think not only is the messaging wrong, there is no, no basis to say that our folks are either overpaid or underpaid based on any information that's available, or any information that you have in your hands to state that, okay? We, we looked in comparisons, I already told you, I looked at Mako study, I looked at other salaries with competing agencies in the area to see where all of our employees actually land. And I'm very, very comfortable 3% is, is not only the appropriate number, it's probably a low number, but I understand the, the conditions, I understood why I walk into every time I come to the board and ask for money, so I understand how to be, I believe, bring it to you appropriately. Secondly, if you actually look at your, your budget numbers, the actual base salary increase is a little less than 3%. It's 2.6% across. If you look at the numbers, base salary adjustments. So if you start looking at what we do, we keep that very, very tight. Now, Dave's correct, we do, actually, there are some people that would not get a raise, and others may get a raise, and some may get a higher raise based on performance. It, it is merit-based. I mean, that's one thing's here that we always... So there are people that may get zero or 1% in a given year, because their performance hasn't been to the level we expected.
Okay. Here are the factual numbers. In the three years that I've been on this board, this is, or the three budget cycles that I've gone, the first budget cycle, just in salaries now, salaries, payroll, overtime, total, year-over-year increase in that budget was 7.1%. Last year, it was 3.96%. This year, it is 3.3%. So I think as an association, we've been very generous over that three-year period of time. And I, I'm going to have to come down on, on Cheryl's side in that there are probably some people out there who are very deserving of a raise. We may be entering into some difficult, challenging times. I would compromise with the 1%, feeling secure that, that the general manager would have the wisdom to allocate, you know, those 3% raises to those individuals who surely deserve it. You know, 100, currently, the number, 182, 162,000 is 3.3%.
Let's be specific here, Jack. I need to straighten out one thing, because I asked about this yesterday. 3% applies only to payroll.
I'm sorry, but what?
It applies only to the payroll line, not, it isn't overtime, it isn't benefits or anything else. 3% provides only the payroll.
It's this number, Ranger?
No, it's not that total. This is, it's that number.
We're talking about, by the way, for those who don't have these figures in front of you, we're talking about 296,000 versus 17, so it's really not significant. But the bottom... Your 296,000 in payroll increase in the, no, this year, you want to talk this year, 124,000 this year, 38,000, yes, 38,000.
That's correct.
38,000, 38,000.
You can't count over that. You can't count over that. How do you count that?
Fine, fine and dandy. What I'm saying to you is, 38 versus 124 is what, 10%?
38,000 is overtime, correct?
38,000 is overtime.
My opinion, you can't count that overtime.
No, go ahead. No, I'm with you.
Either that, or when the roads need to be plowed, we don't have to pay, bring people in because I have to pay them overtime, or when a police officer has to go down to court, I can't have them work later in the week on their regular duty because I have to pay them overtime like that. You can't count that as part of the payroll increase. There may, those numbers flex a little based on what we're seeing, you know, snowstorm is an example. Like, if I have folks in all weekend long, they're on overtime status. So you, I base this on base pay, and that's what a pay raises. So that's the 124. That's the number we need to be looking at. That is less than 3%.
Yeah, it is.
I know, I know my budget.
I'll figure that out in a minute.
I, I just, I by design make sure that I keep at or below that number, because that always appears to be the number that the board wants to stick to. So we do our very best to manage to that number.
The pool of money you're talking about is 124.
Yes, that's... And the challenge I have, folks, it's easy to say, well, it's overtime, is that...
I'm counting with 3.2. Am I doing something wrong?
I, I can't tell you.
162 divided by last year's total?
Yeah, using the total. Why are you using that? Why are you using overtime instead of payroll? 124. And you're making the assumption that our team is overpaid when you make...
No, I'm not making that assumption. I'm not making that.
Okay, wait, wait. Okay, the assumption is that they don't deserve any...
2.6%.
And that's what I was saying. I know where my number is at.
2.6, and you're right, okay.
So I'm below, I know the number you give me, you know, the board's approved in here, and three, we try to stay under that, because I understand what the board's intent when they give that. It's not across the board, it's not everyone all automatically gets. We really do try to measure that and keep it a reach...
What's the universe? How many employees we talk about? Who would be eligible for this 2.6% increase?
Well, it's all in. We have, in a budget you're looking at, 81 full-time employees.
Okay, so we're talking about 81 full-timers, we're not talking about the people that flow in and out of the organization as part-time or summer help.
Your payroll is total.
That's right.
So it is inclusive of all.
I'm talking about the, the increase as far as bonuses or...
The 124 includes, the 124,000 you're referring for salaries is for everybody, all in, not just the 81 full-time employees.
Right. So how are you going to reallocate 2.96% to the 81 employees, or do you allocate it to everybody? Do you give everybody a raise? Does everybody get a raise?
Okay. For budgetary purposes, we look at our payroll, and we understand not to exceed 3% year-over-year. That's just where the number's been, right? That's what the board's approved in my lifetime. Doesn't mean we automatically go to those numbers. Example, this year, I give you a budget with a 2.6% increase. So we analyze each employee, we look at all of our wages across the board, we figure out where everything is, and we do the calculation to come up with what we believe it is. When we sat and went tab by tab and went over it, we hit, you all had all those things broken down, and I told you where the increases were, to whom it impacted, and how it was. Then it all rolls into that final number. So, and that does, that's not guaranteed they get it. We don't automatically do cross-board increases. Each employee, or the budgetary, we, we calculate, and I've shown that to you when we tab by tab. And then when we go through the evaluation process, there's several, several points of evaluation that they have to go through to get the final sign-off for whatever their pay increase is or may not. So I think we're extremely reasonable with our numbers. I think the messaging, and it's easy to say the economy's not going well, or we're projecting it's not going to do well. Easy comments to make, but based on what? I can show you the Mako study report, I can show you salaries with other agencies in the area. What would you like me to share my numbers to?
I think you're talking about two different things. When you say what our people are currently paid versus what similar positions are paid elsewhere versus the state of the economy and whether or not it's appropriate to be increasing salaries.
Okay.
I think they're two different things. So I understand what you're saying about you believe that the current salary level is lower than it should be. That's different than saying we are, are not bad economic times, and there, or we should or should not cap salaries or keep salaries at the level that they are. I mean, I'm seeing that as two separate issues.
Okay.
And so what I hear you saying budget is, I want the flexibility to provide increases because you believe that our people aren't paid enough to begin with. That's separate from whether or not economy says we ought to act differently.
Fair enough. But, but take-home pay is take-home pay to an employee. And if the economy's bad, if you're saying the economy as a whole's bad, it's just as bad for them going home to pay for whatever they need to it. And it, and I firmly believe our numbers are lower. Every, everything that I have so far shows me that, and we look at it every year to now... Everything that I have so far shows me that, and we look at it every year, to now say, well, we're gonna reduce it because he kind of, has he kind of been, it kind of been great in the last three or four or five years?
Nobody asked you to reduce, you just said you're asking me to reduce.
But here's the argument I put forth, we are actually reducing it, cost of goods increases. So if we hold the line on their salaries, their dollar amount that they get paid actually purchases fewer items, it purchases less. So it is in effect a decrease in their take-home salary. The 2.6 actually keeps up baseline with what costs are across for purchasing items. The only fortunate thing we've seen in the economy right now, and no one can figure out why it hasn't spurred more, is the reduction in fuel costs. You're not getting reductions in any other cost of living. So I absolutely believe what we're putting forward isn't only reasonable, it's the low-end reason.
Yes, sir. The cost of living increase, the indexes, like, are lower than 2.6%.
I understood that, that's not, you're telling me a gallon of milk, a loaf of bread, a box of hamper's, although none of those things have increased in the last few years in cost?
No, I'm not telling you that because I don't track those. But on the other hand, we don't have those numbers, we can't get those numbers. And in fact, what we do, you look at, is the cost of living index, which basically generalizes across the board. I understand that it's not, it doesn't impact the person necessarily in the same way. And then some costs will be higher and some costs not. On the other hand, it also impacts the people who are paying these assessments. I, I think, given the economy, I think Cheryl's right to consider a reduction. I don't believe, no raises at all.
Well, I would argue, is the bottom line the goal for an assessment dollar? Are we actually trying to reduce? I believe, look, I can't hold more strongly of any item in this budget than to pay our people. And I just, this, I'm actually leaving, and I've said I wasn't gonna stay a half hour, but because this one's a critical component for us. I think the message that we're sending with recent weeks, and now we're talking about this, is just a miserable message to send to our people right now. I'm sorry, but I'm gonna tell you that way because I feel that way, and it's my job to point that. You all can make your reductions, or whatever you need to do, I take it from other parts of the budget. I would not take it out of our already underpaid employees, I just don't think that's a fair assessment.
That's reallocation of resources is another approach, sure.
That would be my approach, but I still, to what end though? Is the end, is it the board's goal to say, no increase in budget? Is it, you need to start there, that's the goal, tell me that.
All right, well, then, you know.
Majority of the board.
One of the operating issues is a food truck, and if that's eliminated, perhaps that can be.
$1 assessment, you eliminate that today, it's a $1 assessment decrease. No, sir, it's $1. You say it's $6, it's $1, it's not. We have dollar amounts against it for revenue. If you take the food truck out for the expenditure, which certainly you can, you also need to take the revenue estimates out of that.
It's just an example, Bob.
And I understand, I've done the math, I'm trying to stay with Paul through the process, but at the end of the day, now we're saying here, no salary increases or 1% salary increase, that would have been something I respectfully would have requested months ago, and Cheryl, I understand this is new process for you, so it's not a hit on you, but I still would argue then it wasn't the right thing.
I understand, and I think, do understand your position.
Fair enough.
Okay.
So that was be quiet, is what I just said?
No, that was, I think, you know, we get it. But one of the things that you just said is that some people will not get an increase.
Right, agreed.
So that sort of undermines your argument.
Absolutely. How's it undermine it?
Well, it was a use, wait a minute, wait a minute, if you say, it sends a bad message that we're not gonna give any increases, and then you turn around and say, if you give me 3%, there will still be some people who don't get an increase. That means it's the same.
No management.
No, I understand that, but there will still then be some people get no increase, correct?
Absolutely, if you don't perform up to expectations, you should not receive a pay increase, absolutely correct.
If I may, I'm sorry. How about a cap, 3%, 2%, and nobody gets more than 3 or 2%?
How's that reasonable?
I don't think we should take away your flexibility, not, I wouldn't.
Well, again, you give me a goal of 3%, I bring in 2.6, and now we're saying we're taking that. I just, Wendy, it doesn't make reasonable sense to me.
If I may, Bob.
Yes, sir.
I think, you know, notwithstanding the economic, slight economic downturn, and by many forecares, the possibility of a recession. Aside from that, I mean, pretty much the concern that I have over this is that when you do these systematic increases year-over-year-over-year, I mean, you're always raising the base of salaries over that period of time. And so 3% this year may not seem like a whole lot, 2.6%, sorry. But on the other hand, if we had 2%, 2.6% or 3% last year, and the year before that, and the year before that, you get the creeping salary issue. And anybody who's been in business, anybody who's worked for a living, knows what that is. And we have employees that are here for a long time. So I think what we're talking about is slowing that curve.
Well, and that's, you know what, I think that's a valid, okay, no argument, and I completely agree with you. But based on the information we have, previous salary studies that the board didn't take action, step increases that the board never approved. Our.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
That was the important.
Let me suggest something here, because part of what was proposed by the Budget and Finance Committee, there'd be a study done on payroll comparisons and all that. The other side of this is to take a look at the payroll structure that we have in Ocean Pines. And we have a couple of positions in Ocean Pines that we've basically put a ceiling on the salary, but we created a performance bonus that somebody can get paid money out of. Now, that's not how we're structured right now. So what I would suggest is that, for the purposes of this budget, we keep it at 3%, but as a board and with Bob Toppson, we seriously look at the whole salary structure model that we're following. And maybe there is a pool of money for bonuses that can be paid for, to achieve, that does address the escalation of salaries year-over-year-over-year, that perhaps does need to be addressed, but we don't know that until we know the comparison. So I'm gonna recommend that we keep it at 3, with the understanding that we expect, and possibly put money to actually support whatever research needs to be done that, to put the HR together. This is, what are the options here? The option, you know, again, where I came from, there was a pool of money that was established for bonuses, and they got away with the year-over-year-over-year salary increases, because they didn't want to be faced with that. Because at the end of the year, if you constantly have to give somebody a raise to tell them they've done a good job, eventually you do get to a point, that the salary level has gotten to a point that isn't supportable anymore. So maybe the model needs to be addressed, to say, it's a pool of money for bonus, but if the next year you go back to the salary you were before, if you have matched out. That was the structure that I came out of, and I'm sure you've heard of that before, we don't have that. But maybe that's where we need to migrate to, but for the purposes of this coming budget, I'm gonna recommend we keep it right where it's at, actually, 2.6.
I think also, I think we have to talk, should talk about retention. Very important, I know we have employees that have been here a long time, but a policeman here is earning X number of dollars, and a guy over in Ocean City is earning Y number of dollars. Guess what? When there's an opening comes over in Ocean City, this guy's gonna leave, unless he has the best shit in the game to touch. So the point is that you've gotta be competitive with your salary. Whether it's for a clerk, or if it's for a policeman, or fireman, doesn't matter, it could make many difference. You've gotta be competitive. And as far as, go through this example again, you can look at it. Take three employees in the park, one employee's in the house, doesn't do anything, he gets zero. Another employee, hey, he's done a pretty good job, he gets 3%. And the last guy, that's standing, he gets 6%. That's still 9%, that's 333. So the point is that you're not getting any more than what you've been able to get, it's just how you allocate.
And for the budgetary purposes, this is actually a 2.6%, not a 3%, even though the merit had rounded it up to 3. So again, I'm gonna suggest we keep it at the 2.6, which is where it is, and, but we commit, as a board and direct, that the appropriate research be done going forward for us to evaluate the whole salary structure.
Isn't that already in the budget? HR person, then that person.
Five years.
We've had that for a long, long time.
I'm gonna talk about the past, Dave, I'm gonna talk about.
You wanna talk about right now?
I thought that was something that was included.
Just don't tell.
Isn't that?
I can tell you what we're working on right. Right now is an HR audit, I told you all that, and it's first quarter of the year, we're very focused on that. Working on the engagement with a company right now to come in, do that, see what type of HRs.
So that's there, doing that.
We're working on that right now. And right behind that, based on the merit increase question, or lack of, I'd recommend the board, I'll go ahead and allow me to do a salary study, but with the understanding that when we get the results telling you what I already know they're gonna be, would be my guess. Then we're gonna have to take another look at how we're paying people, and if it's an upward pay, you need to be prepared to do that. I just, you can't ask to do a salary study when the ones we've done in the past show our team's underpaid, and then we took no action, we put it forward. So uncurrent salary study, happy to do it, and if that's the reasonable way you all wanna approach it, with the understanding that means we're probably gonna have to make reasonable adjustments. Then we have factual information to make a decision whether we do increases or not increases. I mean, I just, right now, I think we're doing it off our feeling of where we think things are gonna be. Let's get some facts behind it, and then we.
I disagree, I don't think that's where I was coming from. I think that's what you are basing your argument on, and I respect that, you deal with it all the time, but I don't think that's where, I was, I accept what you say, so you, so I know otherwise.
I know that.
But I wasn't coming at it from those levels, I was looking at it from a global.
Yeah, Bob, you talked about an HR audit, have we picked a company, you have a company?
Have a company identified, I'm not engaged with that.
So you're not under contract, you can't devolve to that?
Why would I, no, I can't.
You cannot devolve to that?
I cannot, there is no.
Okay, it's a straightforward question, if you.
But I'm looking at several companies, trying to get some pricing.
Do you know the timing, as to when you will select, when you will select the successful?
I have the start of it in February.
That's part of this year's list, as opposed to next year?
The attempt, we're looking to see what dollars we can to allocate to, depending on what prices, and I'll have the pricing set, so I don't pay a dollar. So, you know, we're trying to look at that now.
But you're trying to do that out of this year.
Yes, it won't impact my recommendations.
And we're not gonna have that study in time to make the decision.
We will not, but Budget Finance has brought it up, you know, in their recommendation salary study, we're just going down that path now. And it, the other thing that goes along with that, folks, is the HR side of the house, not knowing the type of HR, where we're short, what kind of strength we need in HR, we're looking at an audit. Part of that audit, some of these companies also offer salary studies as part of the engagement. So I'm trying to look at that, figure out how we give the best bang for the buck, and get some recommendations from some HR people where we go to get this work accomplished.
One final question.
Sure.
What we're doing right now is simply discussing these things.
Yes.
Ultimately, you vote the budget.
Yes, ma'am.
That's not where we are now, just talking about this, is correct?
Actually, procedurally, you have to have put into the budget what it is you, we direct Bob to do. He put 2.6% in this budget. We either leave it at 2.6, and then vote on the whole budget, or we direct him, as a board, to change that number in the budget, and then we have a vote for the entire budget. So procedurally, we are, in essence, through consensus, as this process goes through, we turn things down, we tell them to change them. So in essence, we are saying, keep it at 2.6, or you can say, change it, and then the overall budget gets voted on. At the end, we don't have line item vote at the end, it's a whole budget.
Right, well, I think we discussed it.
Right.
I think we have one question I've been waiting on, because it's something Pat said. We should know pretty accurate what our turnover rate is. I mean, obviously, if it's very, very high turnover rate, then we're probably doing something. Pretty low, then we're not.
The way I understand the discussion, we're at 0 for Cheryl, 2.6%.
I've already made, I've already, in essence, asked for a consensus that we keep it at 2.6, which is what's the number that's in the budget, with the understanding that this other work is going to be done, and you can then adjust at another time, the whole salary structure, the whole way we pay people, if it needs to be changed, we change it. Because I do agree, at some point, you do not wanna keep a salary structure that causes you to constantly have to give everybody raises, add in the item. You have to put together some kind of program that allows for excellent employees to make money and stay employed here, while at the same time, you don't put yourself in a position where you're pricing yourself out of business. So at my point, I know Bob's gotta go, is there at least a consensus here to keep it at 2.6? And we can close that issue as far as what's in the binder that we're gonna ultimately vote on. Do we have a consensus to do that?
No. No, I think. Obviously, it's gonna have more discussion.
No, not necessarily, do we have a consensus?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we got a consensus, there's four people saying yes, I understand the hesitation of other people, that 2.6 stays in the budget. And I think, since you have to leave, I think we're done. Because the rest of this stuff is, we can't discuss this without Bob being, it's just inappropriate. We're not gonna get the answers, we're just gonna argue with each other over it.
I understand, I have something scheduled.
I understand, I'm not blaming you at all, I'm just saying to this board, if we stay and try to do anything else on this page, all we're gonna do is end up arguing with each other without the resource of the staff. So I think we need to set another meeting, Pat.
Yep.
And I will have to join by phone, I would strongly prefer that if, although Bill, I don't know where you are next week, when you're driving or whatever, I'm looking at Monday morning, if that fits to you at all. Again, I don't know, I don't even know Tom Eric's schedule.
Well, he'll be back. He's back.
Well, but I.
He's back. Tuesday, Wednesday, Tuesday or Wednesday.
Tuesday, I'm driving. Monday's.
You're, what about Tuesday?
I'm driving, so I don't know where, you know, it's supposed to snow Monday night, Tuesday, all that kind of stuff.
And Tuesday, Wednesday, I'm in Ford.
Thursday morning, I'm driving again, we could do it Thursday morning. I said Monday morning or Thursday morning.
How about the 20th, Cheryl?
Just my switch.
Well, I understand, but my intention was to leave at 11 o'clock. I've got just a couple more weeks to earn some money at my job, and then I'm done at the end of the.
You're talking about Saturday morning, the 20th, Bill, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Saturday morning, the 20th, I could, I mean, right up to the 25th.
Guys, look, I coach soccer, I've met soccer. Guys, look, I, I coach soccer, I've missed soccer meetings before this board, I'm not, not coaching my son anymore for, for... Monday, the 22nd?
That's...
I mean, does that give us enough time to the 25th?
No, it doesn't. And, and... See, that's the situation, guys. We've got to give, we have time to change the budget and to give us the package prior to vote on the 25th. And I absolutely am out of it. We've got to move on with this thing.
Well...
Get it done. So we need to meet, and when are we going to do it?
So, so you're saying it, we, we have to make, take that vote on the 25th? That's, that's bagged into concrete.
It is not in concrete, but it clearly makes sense.
If we don't vote, just, and I, and I've got to go, if we don't vote sooner than we did last year, it puts the entire staff in... You don't want to hear it?
No, 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 go ahead. I was, I was...
Jack, it's fine.
Read that, it's fine.
Wait, before you take off, what about Friday the 19th? Friday the 19th?
I will make myself available.
Yes, I can do the 19th.
What time, what time?
All day?
No, I mean, what, what time do you want to start in the morning?
7 o'clock.
6 AM, 6?
There you go. I got it before 3:00.
How about 4?
6.
I'm off at 4, let's do it.
I'll be there at 6. 8 AM.
I've got to bet at 4, so I just stay up.
What time you want to do? 9:00?
9:00.
9:00?
9:00.
On the 19th?
On the 19th.
Good call. I will do my best to be there.
9:00.
What conference call, yeah?
I will do the best I can to be there.
Thank you all. We'll do it over here. Here, I know we do this more often. How many people are invited this time, Wes?
All right, I'm managing a small board, I've got a meeting room for years and years. So you see what I'm saying?
Media call for the 4 years.
Take care. Joe, I'm sorry.
Yeah. It's a beat, the meeting's not adjourned, yes. Anybody adjourned the meeting?
Uh, media questions. Media questions.
Eddie? That'll call for the adjournment. Moving adjournment. All in favor? Aye, 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 aye. You no longer have a quarrel.